Board of Selectmen meeting to order, six thirty for Monday, September tenth, two thousand and eighteen. As required by open meeting law, you are hereby informed that the town will be video and audio taping, as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audiotape this meeting must notify the chairman prior to the start of the meeting. Hearing nobody, please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
[inaudible]
Anybody for our weekly briefing? Okay, oh, no, I'm chief.
Briefing or public comment or announcements tomorrow is September eleventh. It's a day we should never forget, and we will be, as we've done the last seventeen years, acknowledge that. Public is welcome, it'll be a brief memorial, and if you're gonna go, if you could come by quarter of ten, that'd be great. And again, it's something that we should not forget.
Thank you, chief. Anybody else for a weekly briefing? Anybody for a public comment and announcement? Good evening, Cindy.
Good evening, I actually wasn't going to announce this, but I think I would like to have it in the paper, so I'm going to. We had a great parade last night, yesterday, sorry. It's been a long day, and I wanted to announce who our winners of the parade were for the awards. We will be presenting them with the awards at the October first Board of Selectmen's meeting. But best overall was Jack Conway with their great house that they have every year. It was a new one this year, so thank you to them. Our judges found that they would be deserving of that. The most town spirit was our own Harwich Town Band. And the most fun was a band that we have during the Wednesday nights, the Drummer Queen. So those are our award winners, I want to thank everyone for coming out. Also want to remind everyone that the fireworks that will be this coming weekend are the fifteenth. It was a little bit of a snafu along the way that we had a issue out there, but they are Saturday, September fifteenth, at eight P. M. And then as of today, some great news came out of the Housing Assistance Corporation. We have three hundred and twenty volunteers. So thank you for everyone out there in the town that has volunteered. Looking forward to a great big fix on Saturday, September twenty-second.
Great, thank you, Cindy. Did you have something? Go ahead, Don.
Cindy? For you, Lee. Going back to the parade, Ed and I were extremely disappointed that we did not win for the Selectmen's float, the best float decorated it under five minutes.
And I saw those decorating skills, nice job, guys, thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Oh, Ed, go ahead.
Yep, and just last note, Saturday was Beach Day, although it was not typically a beautiful beach day. It was a little overcast, but there was quite a collection of families and kids and other folks down, and a lot of fun was had. We got, the festival committee got a big help from the members of the Key Club at Montemoy High School, running the games on the beach, and we thank them very much for that. And this coming week, as you may have heard around town, Friday and Saturday, Saturday and Sunday, is Harwich Cranberry Festival with music and arts and crafts on both days. And we have a good lineup of food trucks, and one of our local brewery here, just down the road on Great Western, is providing beverage, and it'll be a great day. And it looks like Hurricane Florence is going to do a nice pirouette around us, so hopefully have a good weekend.
Thank you, Ed. We'll move on to the consent agenda, if we could get a motion, Ed.
I'd like to move approval of the consent agenda, including the following items. Approval of minutes of August twentieth, regular meeting, accept the resignation of Joan Filahi.
Filahi.
Filahi, as a full member of the Council on Aging, accept the gift of an eastern redwood tree in memory of Jacob Spitz to be planted at Island Pond Cemetery, and approve the request by Eversource to install approximately forty feet of conduit cable under the roadway to provide service to the homeowner at fourteen Hudson Lane.
Second.
Moved in second, Ed. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I just wanted to make a comment that I'm sorry I held up the resignation of Joan Filahi, but we didn't have an actual written resignation at the clerk's office the last time around. And I've talked to her, she absolutely wants to resign, and thank you for waiting.
Okay, any other discussion on that? So all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, on to public hearing and presentations. Presentation intermunicipal agreement between Barnstable County I.T. and the town of Harwich with Bill Travers.
Yeah, Madam Chair, just to probably maybe set the table a little bit. The board in the budget cycle for FY nineteen had put in about forty thousand dollars in which to look at I.T. We had done an internal review locally with Foster and Scott from the fire department, and we had that material that was presented, and I think the board was looking for a little bit more. So with the forty thousand, I have been in discussions with Bill from the county, and he has put forth a proposal. Both these proposals are under forty thousand dollars, I'm sorry, they're both within the forty thousand, and there's two proposals, so I can award those. Where it was a board concern, I wanted to make sure that the board was comfortable with the approach that administration was putting forward, so I asked Bill if he would come this evening to kind of talk about the two components of, there's two things that he's proposed. One is to look at the study that was done internally, and to update and see if there was any other elements that needed to be included in that, and to also do kind of a plan going forward for what the recommendation would be for how to staff it, and then secondly, to provide some backup support to Foster for the next year. So the first one is seven thousand, one twenty-five, and the second one is nineteen nine fifty, in that range. So within the forty thousand, and if we had special projects that came up during the course of the year, we needed him, we would access that money to accomplish that. So I'd like to present Bill and have him do his overview.
Thank you very much, that saved me a lot of table setting there. I'm not sure, I'll just jump right into the meat of it. So it's all spot on, scroll down here. So we have been talking for quite a while, on and off, and in a rather informal capacity, and the same has been true with a lot of other towns, just helping out where we can, and, you know, seeing where opportunities lie. And this came back around again, and is now presented here in a formal capacity. And we've done a lot internally at the I.T. department, the county. You've already introduced me, I was just gonna double back and say I'm Billy Travers, I'm the Director of I.T. at the county of Barnstable, there being formal. So we have developed a three exhibit sort of framework of contracts for providing services to towns. The first of which is an assessment, and there's already an assessment that's been done, in a manner of speaking, a report internally. So a lot of this will build upon that, either in substance or in scope. And it's, that will serve to actually provide a support services after the fact, in order to get to an S.L.A., a service level agreement, in order to know what we're getting into, in order to be able to deliver support reliably, we have to know what we're dealing with essentially. And that is the point of the assessment. And now, there were three items selected, or two essentially. Infrastructure, technical infrastructure and services, that's what you think of when you think of an actual I.T. assessment of any sort. That's technology and what it's doing, the nuts and bolts, if you will. And the assessment of I.T. security is isolated out here just because it's a hot button issue, and I just wanted to make sure that was known, that it was included under that blanket. And then we have assessment of I.T. staffing and responsibilities, and this will serve to kind of isolate tiers of service within Harwich, what is being done where, and less about, I don't want to get too far into the specifics of it, but it'll generally map types of services to point people, see where things are being done. An element that'll come out of a lot of this is very common will be shadow I.T., you know, so what's being done, kind of marbled across the organization, that isn't necessarily known or accounted for, and as part of an I.T. budget or operation. And all this assessment will lead us into eventually the Exhibit B, which is the support services. And that was, this is, I shouldn't really say this with a public safety, but putting on fires, I'm not used to that in the county, because I'm gonna have to deal with, you know, overlapping metaphors. So that's break-fix, keeping things running, keeping things going. The third part of this Exhibit C, which actually isn't here, because something in Exhibit C would come out of an assessment, would be determined as a need, a project need, a specific need, that isn't break-fix support. And that will be correcting the issues that are causing the break-fix problems, or an attempt to, anyway. So that's an important kind of theme of isolating the tiers, is you have an immediate need. I'm trying to think of analogy here. There's lots of car analogies and things, so if you have a tire that's balding on a car, you can replace the tire every year, or you can spend triple the amount and get a front end alignment and a ball joint, and there you go, you don't need to buy a tire every year. So kind of isolating out what are the things that can be corrected to make things more efficient and easier and require less overhead short term, from the day-to-day operations that actually have to take place. That's a brief synopsis, would you like me to go on further?
Maybe, Madam Chair, one of the things I think we're, I kind of heard from the board, from the budget discussion, is, you know, is there an opportunity to continue to use the county as a backup? And I know that there are other towns that engage the services, maybe you can just reference a few other towns that engage the services?
So right now, we do hourly support for Chatham on network infrastructure things, most of it's remote. We host things that we're trying to get out of, because there's more competitive cloud options and things. We actually host the town of Chatham's phones and email on our county campus. We do TRURO, we host their email system, we're migrating them as well. These are all scopes, project scopes, to migrate them off of our infrastructure, because they're actually the only ones left on our servers now. We've already migrated the county, most of our things to the cloud. Those are the, those are the as-a-service offerings. I did mention Chatham does network support with us. TRURO, we do per diem support at a set amount of days a week. Wellfleet, we basically do everything for, and that's, that was the first kind of experiment, when their director left and they needed help, and we went in and never came out, basically. And it's worked out well, though. Even in the situation, their former town administrator, Harry, was a former I.T. director, and so that buffered us a little bit, and that kept it going. So with the transition there, I was a little reticent to assume that anything would maintain with a non-tech savvy, or less tech savvy, town administrator, or buffer of that sort, but it's actually been A-OK, and it is what it is. It's been a great experiment, and it's continuing, so maybe it's not an experiment anymore. Let's see here, leaving people out. We started talks of this nature with a number of towns, but they're all roughly around this stage. There's, I know I'm forgetting something, I always do that. Yeah, those are the towns, and what was the other part of your question, Chris? Sorry, wrong dish.
Just to kind of give the board a sense that, you know, I think as we go forward, if the recommendation comes back that the county could provide, you know, a cost-effective backup, then that's something obviously administration would give serious consideration to. I think the idea is for FY nineteen to come in, do the study, have the backup that we need, and then we'll incorporate these elements into the FY twenty budget, whatever the recommendation comes back at. And I do believe the recommendation will come back within, I'll say within sixty days, I think you have within thirty days in that.
Very generous, huh?
But assuming that there may be a little bit of slippage, I'd rather have the work be done right than quick.
There could be the, I mean, it's scheduling things and such, you know, getting in front of the right people to talk to them about various things, those will probably be any slowdowns, if any, but we'll be able to jump into it right away. And that's, you had mentioned the support, we do twenty-four-seven on-call support as needed, things of that nature. So we can kind of fill in the gaps, and again, the only thing that I try not to lose sight of is, you know, are we, the reason we're getting called into public safety intro on Columbus Day or something is a perfectly preventable thing that could have been, you know, fixed as part of a different project or something. It's just keeping an eye out for those other tiers of things, but that's a different part of this. Any questions at all?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My interest, we were talking about this in an ongoing way over the last six months. My interest in this is, there's like at least two major components. There's a macro thing here where you've got the servers, and how we protect against vulnerabilities, backup, so that we're never too far away from being able to recover data if in Atlanta were to happen. But the second thing that I was also interested in, because Foster's swamped. Physically, if somebody needs a LAN card or something, I mean, he's gotta do that because he's here. But there are other things that would involve like a station, or do you anticipate, if you're gonna get into that kind of support, that you'd be able to do remote screen work, so that...
Yes, that would be, part of the assessment will be to determine what capabilities for remote support are there currently, and either if out of the gate, we can use what's in place to any capacity, we can do that, and know, you know, how to go about it, or if it's something where we have to say we have to do X, Y, and Z to get to that place that you want to be as far as remote support goes, then that would be the result there, too.
And on the first part of this, you're going in from the ground up, you're just looking at this saying, okay, here's what you guys say you need, and here's what you guys have.
Right, yeah, yeah, nothing personal, just make sure that everything is...
No, it's not personal, that's why I'm asking, it's really, it needs to happen. We need an assessment, this is the, this is the way we constructed it, but is there anything we're missing or we should have that we hadn't thought of, and in what manner should we go forward?
There's no real action that we're looking for the board, I just want to make sure the board was comfortable with the progress before I engaged the contract.
Right, Ed, do you have any other questions?
No.
Michael?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, Bill, for coming up here. As I'm sure Chris has shared with you, we had Foster and Scott in the audience, did a great job of listing what we have available. My concern with that was, is to go back, and I think that's where you're following up now, is strategy-wise, you know, what's our next step going forward? And specifically, I've seen too many examples where people have tried to fix organizational problems with computers, rather than vice versa, and be sure it makes sense. And so I was hoping that when you, I'm not sure if this falls in your chart, but, because you had done check assessment of business processes, for instance, but somehow I think we want to be sure the pieces fit together, that we're not trying to do complex programming because we're not organized to have the workflow, you know, in a logical way. So I'd like that feedback as well, that it makes sense.
Yes, that's something that could definitely kind of leach into, that will be covered in more of a I.T. staffing or function-specific capacity, the boxes that were checked, but then, because you're absolutely right, that technology is, leave out the easy part, the difficult part is people.
Organizing the flow.
Right, is the culture change, and making sure that it works with how the people are working. So, I mean, anybody can just implement or just set something up and say, here you go, but getting people to use it and getting it to work in a meaningful way is a different thing.
Do you look at, and so that would entail looking at hardware matches up from department to department, where it makes sense. How about software, do you take a casual look at that as well?
Yes, that'll come under that purview. Anything hardware and software related will be assessed in there. With business process and policy and governance, that's more along the lines of the, of actual like policies and procedures and standards, and more along the lines of like systems integrations, getting various functions to, more organizational changes rather than technology-centric. But, yeah, so software will definitely be in this as an output.
I think the goal is just that everything makes sense, you know.
That would be nice.
That'd be nice, that'd be nice. I really haven't thought about this, Don's brought it up several times, but when you talk about security, do you take a look at the vendors we're using, say, for paying taxes and stuff, and their security issues or that? Or is that a different?
That's something that we kind of look for red flags on. We look at various, M.S.I. SAC is one example we are on the mailing list for, if you can say that. But we look for known issues with, but we wouldn't go probing a service provider's network. You know, we'd go so far as to look on like what they're using. Most as-a-service providers are using something like Amazon underneath, anyway. But, yeah, so that is part of it, but we're not gonna necessarily assess a third party or do any...
Well, I do like to approach the strategy first and then backup second, because then it gives us a chance to look at maybe helping with the web, because that's a huge job, and I'm never sure we're gonna have enough in-house resources to do that, but sounds good.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To follow up on Larry's point, not that I'm asking you to rewrite our software for us, but it's driven me nuts in the near past, that I look at things like the software for our web presentation to the public, where there's a lot of busy work that goes on. Instead of having pointers where there are auto-fill fields of the same information, people have to continue to re-enter that.
Paste.
So not that I'm asking, are you gonna rewrite the software, but it would be helpful if you looked at some of the more used platforms and say, you know, it just seems like there's an awful lot of busy work, so we could have something in hand, or go back to a vendor and say, you know, we're getting a recommendation that we could get much more productivity if...
Right, right, that's exactly something that would be covered as part of the initial phase here, would be identifying that in a meaningful way, so that you could either through us for an additional scope of work or take it someplace else. That's kind of the point around, the assessment was a way of us being able to cover ourselves, but also give a deliverable to the town, to take with them wherever they go.
I think, you know, to follow up on that aspect, once you're able to provide your analysis to the board, to the town, you know, will you also be able to provide a breakdown on costs in terms of upgrades in different areas?
Definitely, within a ballpark, of course, but yes, definitely, that's something that you do very frequently for lots of people daily.
They'll need that. Okay, any other questions?
No.
Yeah, I'll say, thank you.
Thank you very much for the questions. Thanks for having me.
On to new business, the request permission to refinance affordable home on Driftwood Drive as required by deed rider.
Yeah, I can do a simple overview. We have a request from an individual that has a property that is currently an affordable unit. As I understand the request, they're seeking to just refinance so they can get a lesser of an interest rate. There's no terms and conditions to the affordability that changed, this is simply an ability to refinance and capture a better market than what was originally perhaps captured, and if the individual wants to identify...
That pretty much covered it, thank you.
Any questions? Ed, did you have a question?
Yeah, I do have a question, Madam Chair. Just to be clear, because I read the quitclaim deed, you're not looking to shake out more money to do in addition or anything? It's just the house you have will be the house you will have.
Exactly.
And you just want to lower your payments under the mortgage, so you need our approval because it requires it...
Exactly.
...to do that.
Go from a seven point something percent to a four point eight.
But it's just that simple, it's like, I'm just gonna pay less but living in the same place.
No equity, no nothing, exactly.
Okay.
Okay, so go ahead, Ed.
I know that we approve of the refinancing...
Request.
Request for sixteen Driftwood Lane.
Yeah, Driftwood Lane, second.
Moved in second, and any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And on to B, winter boat storage at Sacquetucket Harbor.
So, Madam Chair, I think I'm gonna turn this over pretty quickly to John, but as I know, as I understand, the chair's desire is that we had previously put forth some interest in having some storage on the town sites, and then a town meeting was discouraged, so we have not encouraged it. But then there has been additional requests from folks, as I understand, and I'm not a nautical guy, but boats that have large masts and things that you cannot go too far off of the, out of the water because of the utility lines that exist. There is apparently some level of interest in having the town consider using some of the parking lot that would not require demasting, or whatever the right term is, to bring the boats underneath. So really, the request for the board this evening is, if you want, there has been a board policy not to pursue, so we have not pursued, but there has been a public interest request to pursue it with that limited area of just boats that have the large masts that aren't easily accommodated off-site. I'll have John, if there's any specific questions or details.
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Rendon, Harbor Master, thanks for having me. So as the memo that I wrote in your packet states, you know, we were, the department was approved to do boat storage back in November two thousand and sixteen, so we did a season of having boat storage in the west lot. The west lot is the town lot, and then the east lot is the state public access lot. So we did some winter boat storage that season, and then the board chose to no longer allow winter boat storage the following year. And so I'm really here because I have received much feedback from boaters at Sacquetucket. I think the board has received some of those letters, and that there is a need. There is a need for storage, winter boat storage, for large boats, deep draft boats, sailboats, that can't go over the road. And there has been talk in the past that there are commercial providers that have that ability to do so, but as I think you'll hear from some of these members, the space is just not there. And so I think we have the opportunity to support these boaters. Many of them take their boats to Falmouth, to Hyannis, to New Bedford, to all, at other areas outside of our town, where they're spending their money to haul their boats, to winterize their boats, to store their boats, to shrink wrap their boats. And I think a lot of that should stay in town. And while we would be using town property to store the boats, a lot of that work that gets done will be done by our local commercial providers. The shrink wrapping, the painting of the bottom, the winterizing. So I'm before you because I've received that input from our boaters that there's a need. And I know what the opinion, what the decision of the board was last year, so we haven't offered winter boat storage. If that's the direction you want to go, that's fine, but I think you need to hear more than just me on what the need is from our boaters.
Thank you, John.
Absolutely.
Is there anyone here from the public who would like, go ahead? If you just state your name at the podium.
Good evening, board, my name is Paul Duffy, one Belmont Road, and a twenty-year Sacquetucket tenant, lieutenant. So thank you for the invite to come here tonight and give you my input. I'm one of these odd vessels that has a five-foot draft, sixty-foot tall mast, and I'm looking for options, preferably in the area to store that vessel on the hard in the winter with the mast up, with access allowed to it during the winter. As John had mentioned, I can go to various towns around the Cape, I can go to Matapoyset, I can go to Sandwich, I can go to Susuut, very limited ability to do that in Chatham, but, and I've tried... But, and I've tried, I've tried to verify these facts where I think this cat and I approached you first with this. To my knowledge, there is no service provider in town that can provide that service to me. So I'd like to take the opportunity tonight to ask you to allow the harbor master to rent space to vessels that fit my profile. I think probably, just really formal count, I believe between Chatham and Harwich alone, there are probably thirty to fifty potential customers for the service. And I think the numbers John's been speaking about in the past, that probably adds up to several tens of thousands of dollars worth of revenue to the harbor that is now sitting as empty lots in the winter. So that's pretty much my presentation on the subject. And I'm happy to answer any other questions now about it or later. I think there are a few other people here tonight to speak to that situation as well, so.
Well, we'll go ahead and hear from the.
No, no, I won't.
Yeah, let's hear from everyone and then we'll follow up with questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who else would like to speak? Is there anybody else?
Hi, I'm Ted Bayless. I'm a Harwich resident and a slip holder in Sacquetucket. I fall in the same category. I have a boat that I'd like to store at Sacquetucket. Years past, I've had to take it to Matapoisette for, because there's a lack of available facilities here in Harwich. There's a waiting list over at Stage Harbor Marine. That's the only other place that I know of that you can store a boat like this. And it's a waiting list, and I think they can only store about twelve boats over there, right on Bridge Street. Now, from what I understand, there has been some reluctance to do this because of interfering with local town businesses who are in boatyard, in the boatyard business, who do boat maintenance and storage. And I would argue that actually the reverse is true. Because if you have boats stored at Sacquetucket that are normally going well out of the region, they need to be serviced. I would argue that this will create more business for the local boatyards. Somebody's got to come in and do the shrink wrapping and winterize it and commission it in the spring, bottom paint, et cetera. And while clearly there will be some do it yourself, most of us really don't get out there with a shrink wrap gun and do it ourselves, you know. So I would argue that this would really generate business for the local boatyards because they could come service the boats that are in Sacquetucket. And in fact, instead of reducing their business, I would think it would expand their business because they would be able to service boats that they don't have to store in their yard. So it gives them more business. So that's my take on it, and I hope you'll look at it favorably.
Thank you. Anybody else? Take your time.
How you doing? My name's John Hour. I'm Harwich Port Boat Yard, the owner. Thank you for letting me speak. I thought this was all put to bed back at town meeting when that got voted down. I think we have a little different opinion on how that, the wording was and how that got voted, but all in all, I'd love to lease that piece of property where the town has and do as they've done all through the years with the other boatyard. I've not ever turned down a boat. This year, we had one boat that I couldn't fit up the lift, up the ramp because it was too wide. It was, the boat was, I'd say, twenty-four, the ramp's twenty-one. It just physically wouldn't fit up the ramp. I did store that boat, all went along in the water. You know, it wasn't in the lot. You know, I only have twenty slips. I'm a small operation. But, you know, I do have five full-time employees, two part-time employees, and I take on the kids from the tech school. And it's been great. It really has. But with twenty slips, I think I have five moorings, five moorings, Danny, six moorings. That alone pumping gas just doesn't do it. I need the storage. I have the lot in front of my property over on Harbor Road leased until two thousand and thirty-three. Four deep draft, high mast boats. You could go down there in the winter and say, oh, he's full. But in actuality, half the boats that are in that lot would be moved over to that property I bought over on Queen Anne to store boats when I first bought the boatyard eleven years ago. So there could be room. I'm not saying I could take on twenty or fifty more boats. But, you know, I can take on some more boats. So like I say, the thing that I worry about is I keep my guys, my five core guys, year-round. It's a great job, insurance and everything. And this is how I keep them on. I just don't know how I could do that if I had a bunch of customers march out the door. And that's what bothers me. Like I said, if we were to lease it, I'll put it out to bid like we've done in the past with several other lots. I'd be more than interested into leasing the property, giving these folks a place to go and keeping the business in town. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
And I just want to respond to that. We did provide that option the first time around. We put it out, public notice, offering boatyards if they wanted to lease sections of Sacquetucket. And so that's fine. I mean, if that's the route we want to go, that was our first intent. But we got no response other than Allen Harbor Marine, who continued to rent space from us because they were at Allen Harbor. And then it moved to Sacquetucket, so.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So if I could follow up on what Mr. Hour said, and I have, I want to be clear before I say this. I have nothing but respect for his operation. I've dealt with Dan quite a bit, and it's a top-notch operation. The geometry of my vessel is they can't get me on or off their trailer. They couldn't accommodate the mast because their mast handling facilities at the time weren't adequate for that weight and height of a mast. Ted, your vessel's even larger than mine. I was, one season I used John's services for commissioning, decommissioning. The following year, after conversation with his folks regarding the difficulty we had that year in and out, that it wasn't a good idea that I return as a customer because I just, I wasn't, they weren't set up to handle me. So in my specific case, John hasn't lost any revenue for me and won't in the future. And I think as Ted had said, he'd probably be gaining it because I'd be going in for a shrink wrap and what have you, that I'm going to Chatham, I'm going to, you know, other locations to get to this date, the last twenty years, so.
Thank you.
John's right. He did put it out. And when he originally put it out to bid, he sent me over in an email all the different spots, locations, for one year, for one year. Then he was going to do his construction. So at that point, you know, I don't want to make my commitment for one year. I pretty well settled. This past year, I didn't get the email and I missed the advertisement. I would have been all over it. Mind you, I don't think this piece that he's talking about was ever part of the piece that was out for rent. Maybe it was the second time. The first time it wasn't. And that's where I stood. I just missed it. And when I saw Allen's Harbor putting all the boats in, and then I went back and looked in the old newspapers and I missed the announcement. Mind you, the year before, I got the email showing me all the spots. I was watching the waterways meetings, waiting for it to come up so I could go and talk. It never came up in the waterway meetings. And then I missed the advertisement, and that's how that happened.
Okay, thank you. Was there somebody, yeah, go ahead.
Good evening. I think.
Could you just identify yourself?
Oh, Barry Bissett.
Thank you.
Taxpayer. Slip owner, slip holder. So I think the issue here is with sailboat owners, is it's a lot of work when you take your boat out to take the mast off the boat. Huge. Just, I mean, you like, take the head off the boat. It's a lot of work. And the key is to store the boat with the mast up. And nobody can, nobody can do that. Very few places can do that, except for Sacquetucket, which would be a savings for the boat owners. And, you know, you don't have to disassemble the whole boat every fall and reassemble it every spring. And it's a lot of work. So that, we're not talking twenty-foot, I don't think we're talking about every twenty-foot bow rider boat, you know, out there. We're talking sailboats mainly, or big boats.
Okay, thank you.
Difficult.
Yeah, thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Rick Reed, and I've been at Sacquetucket for about eight years now. And I kind of live on the edge a little more extreme. I brought my boat down to Newport for years because I didn't, as Barry said, I didn't have to take the mast off, which was huge. Of course, you go down there to get it ready for the spring and you're coming back over the Cape all the time. So after a while, I said, well, I'm going to try somebody local. And they did. They took the mast down. I have a forty-two-foot boat and it's got a sixty-foot mast. And to see that thing dangling in the air is quite impressive. And see it not hit the ground is even more impressive. But anyways, so I said I was going to try this. And I couldn't find a spot. I mean, John, his folks have come over many times and helped me with my boat, but I couldn't find a spot. So I did one inland. And one day I made the mistake of following the boat along the road. And the only people that enjoyed that would be the utility companies because I had leaves and branches and you name it, and it was a pretty scary thing. And I did that for a while. So I don't know what the facts are around the various offerings that were made for this space. But to me, there's a clear need for this space, for boats of my size, because I would prefer only to take the mast down every five or six years when I really needed to do some maintenance on it. So I'd appreciate you giving some consideration for this property and whatever best fits the town of Harwich. And I too, as Ted said, agree that I think there's some revenue there that you could take advantage of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, sure.
Good evening. My name is Dan Lowry. I'm the general manager for Harwich Port Boat Yard. Excuse me, I don't speak well in public facilities or arenas. There's been issues on the, many topics going on right now. I see both sides, and it's fair. Both sides seem to have their valid points. Like I said, I don't speak well in public, so I lost my train of thought instantly. The point is, I've worked at Whichmer Harbor for thirty-plus years. Two owners, two harbor masters. It's a lot of time, a lot of hard work. We've made changes to our facility. We've increased our capabilities. We down, years past, it was a sketchy thing to store a boat with the mast up. Due to the storms that show up in the winters, last March, we all know, gust over ninety-three miles an hour. So if you've got a forty, fifty, sixty-foot mast sticking up in the air down along the waterfront, the liability goes way up the roof. That boat goes over, hits the boat next to it, that boat goes over, hits the next boat to it. So we have restructured the way we think about that, adding substantially more supports underneath the boats. So that will be handled in the future. As far as revenue, I'm not sure because it's a small domino effect. I think they get the storage for a cheaper rate, which is fine. I understand. Everybody's on a budget, especially with a boat. But what happens is, okay, I got a break on the storage, now I'm going to go paint it. That revenue goes away from the boatyard. And I'm going to do my own winterizing because I Googled it. That revenue goes away from the boatyard. So I just wanted to put those facts out in benefit of the boatyard, which I work for and I'm happy to work for. It's been a great experience. And it's been a good experience working for John Rendon as the new harbor master. And by the way, kudos, well done on getting the harbor, the project done. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry?
Thank you for your, John and everyone for your presentations. Not to make it too simple, but it seems like everyone's after doing the work in the, in the places around town. The only issue is storing at Sacquetucket Harbor. And I'm not sure why we wouldn't, and maybe we, I would like to see us try to lease that out again. We haven't been in that business ourselves, and we have a history of leasing. If you look at the new rest, the, excuse me, snack shop coming up, we're leasing that. We have the golf restaurant. We're leasing. It makes sense to me just to handle that in a normal fashion, give it another chance and lease it. In terms of the business aspect of it, one item that's critical to all of us has been working at, that have been working on wastewater issues, for instance, in Pleasant Bay, so on, is that the maintenance, the washing and all that be done, not in the parking lot anywhere, but in a place where they're trapping the wastewater, so it's not getting into Whichmer Harbor. And I think the, both Harwich Port and Allen's Harbor offer that capability. So I think the issue for me would be to be sure that it's properly cleaned up and washed and the wastewater collected, retained as we can do. And that, my recommendation, my argument would be to go ahead and try to lease that out so that it just falls in line with our other businesses.
Michael?
Yeah, I think I agree with Larry. I'm against putting boats in Sacquetucket Harbor. I have been from the beginning, and I haven't changed my mind based on a few letters. I appreciate the difficulty in storing these big boats. But I think we just heard from one business owner that they can accommodate the boats. And there may be, I think I've gotten six letters or six emails roughly. Sure, if we make a business out of this, we can fill the parking lot. If we offer it, I'm sure we could fill the parking lot. If we had to store boats there and if the rest of the board voted to store boats there, I would hope that they would go the lease option and allow local businesses to bid on that space and keep the liability with local businesses. And I can just see one of these boat owners climbing up on top of their boats on stands and taking a header off into the parking lot. Because that's on town insurance, and that's on the town. That's not going to fall on the business owners. So my position remains the same. I don't think we should be storing boats at Sacquetucket. And further, I think that we just spent not eleven million of taxpayers' money because John was fortunate enough to get us some grants. But we spent a lot of taxpayers' money, and I think the rest of the taxpayers, as we sold it to them, should be able to use that. And having boats in a sea of shrink wrap in that parking lot for upwards of seven months, I think is a disservice to the people in town of Harwich.
I've been told that I need to speak louder, so we'll move the microphone. So, but I was, as you all know, I was a member of the board previously, and I took a brief vacation. Apparently, I took a vacation where there was some back and forth on leasing. And if, John, could you go over what the last, or this, what the last couple of years, because I'm not familiar with what.
What we attempted to do is, under the procurement law, we can only do three-year lease. And we were trying to really accommodate the construction, so that's why we did the one year. And I think we recognized afterwards that that wasn't profitable for folks to do one year. And what we put on before town meeting, we knew we had the snack shack and other items coming up. So we asked to go from three years to ten years, really for the business community, to give them some longevity to make sure that if someone leased, and that component of it got voted down. So we are limited at this point to just doing the three years under the procurement law. And if we wanted to do anything beyond that, we would have to go back to town meeting and get a solicitation to be able to go beyond that. But we could tonight, or if the board so chose, pursue, limit the number of boats. And also, we would be limited to the three years by state law. And I think, I'll speak for myself, I know leasing it out was more advantageous, I think administratively, to the town. So I think the only reason why we did some of that on our own was just to accommodate a need. But that's a little bit of the background.
And I believe it was Mr. Hour's comments. He seemed to indicate that when it was put out to lease previously, it was put out in different sections. So it would have allowed, correct me if I'm wrong, for one operator to lease one section and another operator to lease. Can you explain what those sections were?
Yes, sir. We sectioned out the Downey property.
Yes, sir. We sectioned out the Downey property and the West lot. We were reserving for those large boats who couldn't go under the wires to access the Downey property. And so we, I think there was three sections that we put out for bid. Allen Harbor was the one who put in a bid for it, and so they are currently utilizing one of those sections. So we just split up the property, because it, the whole property, I mean, somebody could have bid on all three, I guess, if you wanted to. But we were just trying to make it so that it was, you know, I knew kind of what the footprint that Allen Harbor typically uses. And so we had three different footprints that were available.
And I also, sort of, in terms of boat storage, as I understand it, Allen Harbor has applied to be able to use the old shed lot on 28 for boat storage.
That's my understanding.
Okay, is he going to be giving up his lease?
I don't know yet. He's got one more year on his current lease, and I think he intends to meet that. He hasn't told me what his future plan is.
Okay. You know, personally, I don't really have any problem with having boats stored on the lots during the winter. You know, this is a seafaring town. You drive around town and find boats stored pretty much everywhere. Tucked away in the woods, in people's driveways. You know, it seems to having them stored at a marina makes eminent sense, so.
Thank you, Ed. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I kind of feel like we've been dancing around the central issue here. It's not about whether it's okay with us to put the boats under a lease or not a lease in our parking lot. And I think it's super disingenuous of us to say, the town meeting said no because it was 10 years instead of three years. That discussion, I was there for, and it wasn't about the years. It was about they didn't want to do it. And I am not willing, knowing the legislative history, we are not the legislative part of government. We are the executive. The last time this went in front of town meeting, it got turned down. The only real honest way of approaching this, if we're going to put out a lease, would be to go back to those same people and ask again, with the change in years, in the change, and now that there's not gonna be construction going on, how do you feel? But I'm not gonna substitute my judgment just because we can get in under the wire with three years and we don't have to deal with those town meeting people, because the town meeting people are us. That's the citizenry. They decided they did not want to do this. So you gotta go back to them again.
Chris?
I think the point I was trying to make was, the specific request before town meeting was that we already had the authority to go to three years, and we were seeking authority to go to 10. So when it got voted down, it just, that was what was technically was voted down.
But they gave you a lot more information than you were expecting, because there was a lot of discussion. It had nothing to do with the years. It had everything to do with, we'd rather see a local business do this than the government. So, no. I mean, you sat through it. I sat through it. It wasn't just about, well, it's three years versus 10 years. And I am never going to say, well, we can get away with it because we can draw it down to a different number of years, when I know that there's already a town meeting action that said exactly the opposite. If you want to do this, go back to town meeting and ask for permission.
So I would follow up on that to say that that's not necessarily what I took from town meeting. So what you heard and what I heard were a couple of different things. Ultimately, we had the discussion. I don't know that, and to Chris's point, it was about the number of years on the lease.
Officially, that's what it was.
Right. But also, I don't necessarily know, and I'm not saying they did or they didn't, but there's a specific thing here that we're listening to about the ability for certain companies to be able to store these larger boats. And I don't necessarily know that that was clearly delineated, that people understood at town meeting that there was a lack of storage for these boats. To the point of putting an RFP back out, I would be in favor of that. I mean, you know, there's no reason that we can't help businesses do more, and the town gets, gains money by a lease. My question on that note would be, to Mr. Hour, I guess I would direct this, because you would probably have the most information. But if you were able to participate in a lease at Sacquet Tucket, would you then be able to accommodate the larger boats with your equipment? I mean, I don't know the intricacies of how that boat gets put up, but.
Short answer is, yes, I could do that. And I would have. Honestly, that portion of the parking lot had never come out to, unless it came out the last time, which I missed. But the first time, that was never put out to the contractors, the two boat yards. Other lots were, that lot was being left aside.
But that's something your business, and other businesses.
And that's what I'd always been interested in. I have, I've, I bought property over on Queen, and we store small boats, the ones that can go down the road. I do have my lot in front of us at the boatyard. They can take full masted boats, tall drafted boats. It's not the biggest spot. I was interested in that spot where John is, for the high masted. That was never put out for the boatyards, okay? I wasn't interested in the ones that Allen's Harbor wanted or needed. When it came up at town meeting, the article read, "For any amount of time, up to 10 years." Not from three to 10, from any amount of time, up to 10 years. So that's where we, you know, we have a little bit of a, you know, I guess, a little difference in thought on how that really worked. I'm, my whole life's been in Harwich. I'm not gonna go against you and puck you folks. You know, that's just not me. And, and yes, I would be interested in renting that spot if it was to come available.
Before you, you keep on saying "that spot." I'm not exactly sure what spot you're talking about.
Okay, there is one, one, one piece of the parking lot that doesn't go under high-tension wires, that is empty from the parking, from the ramp to a portion of the parking lot that is outside of the state jurisdiction, that is owned by the town, that you don't cross under high-tension wires.
Is that that section, paved section that sort of off in itself up towards the road?
No, it's more like right behind.
Right behind, okay, yeah.
It's where, there was boats there two years ago.
Yeah.
For that one year.
I think that one of the things, we were trying to anticipate what the construction area that was gonna be necessary for the renovations. So I think we did leave some of that as we couldn't lease it out, because we knew that there'd be renovations that would be occurring on it. So we were limited in the initial offering.
And then, if, just give one last question while I'm remembering it. At some point in the past, we did a grant for a portable washing facility. Is that still in existence and useful?
It is, but that grant was for the commercial fleet. It's a shared portable wash system, recyclable wash system, that was shared between Harwich and Chatham. And it's, and it was granted, the grant was granted to us strictly for the commercial fleet.
And John, to Larry's earlier question, in terms of washing and such and wastewater issues, are we prepared to deal with that type of issue, Don?
When we do the pumpouts with this recyclable system, we capture the water and we recycle it. So nothing ever goes in the drains, or nothing ever goes, you know, so. But when boats get hauled out, they, if they want to pressure wash their boats, they'd have to go to one of the local providers to have it done.
But John, stay put.
Go ahead, Larry.
John, you mentioned that one year wasn't acceptable to you, too short. Is three years workable?
Yeah, well, at that point, it was right before construction. That's why they only went in for one year, because they didn't know what they were gonna need for the next year. And I understood that, but I didn't want to say play my cards until that section came up for a longer period of time.
Quick comment, Michael, then I'll turn. Don, you make a good point. I read the discussion differently. I think, in fact, John led the discussion about, we don't want to compete with local businesses. In this case, though, it doesn't sound like we're competing. We're gonna add to their business, and we're meeting the need of these larger boats, that we've had three people here, probably more people, wants to meet that need. So I don't see that as being, fighting against the public opinion on that now.
Michael?
John, question for you. Back to the, not John, not that John, that John.
It's John.
Back to the power washing. With what you just said, they'd have to go to a local marina, pull the boat out, power wash it so they could capture all the bottom paint, weeds, everything that's not supposed to go into our parking lot.
Right now, we don't have the authority, unless we change it, to utilize that recyclable system that Ed asked about.
So isn't that, isn't that, I guess, my question, isn't that a game changer? I mean, the two big boat owners that are here just said that.
Well, I mean, they don't have to necessarily have their hull pressure washed. Right? They could do that once every three years. They could, you know.
They can.
I mean, that's up to the, that's up to the boat owner, but.
But if they take it out and power wash it, that's a no-no in our parking lot?
No, they could put it on his trailer. Dan could pressure wash it on the trailer, put it back in the water, and then they can come and store for the season.
Okay, at their marina, that's my question.
Yes, sir.
Okay. The, as far as the liability, I think Mr. Bayless mentioned that, sure, there'll be, clearly there will be some that do it themselves. Are we going to allow boat owners to work on boats?
We always have, in the time. Minor maintenance, it's not a shipyard. I make that very clear. But if they want to come in and do minor maintenance on their boats, we have in the past allowed that.
Okay, Chris, question to you. Who's got the liability on this, when someone tumbles off their boat?
When we do the lease agreement, we could have them provide certificate of insurance, so they would be the primary. And then, as you pointed out, I mean, any town-owned property, ultimately, if somebody sues, they usually sue the primary insurer and then the secondary insurer, which in this case would be us.
So just so you know, we did that.
We had that.
We had a contract signed by, that one year we did it, we only had several boats, but we had a contract made up. They had to have insurance, naming the town. And they, there's a liability statement in that contract that they have to sign. So we did both those things.
So I imagine, Chris, if this gets voted by the board to go forward with this, there's gonna be an RFP, and then the RFP is gonna come back to us to approve or not approve?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
That's it.
I also think that there's, and I can double-check on this too, but I think there's language that you can put into leases, and the term escapes me now, that literally allows, not only to the point of having liability insurance from the leasing, never mind the town's backup, but there's.
Is it indemnification language?
Yes, exactly.
That if something were to happen, they have the primary? In my experience, what happens is someone sues the town, our insurance company says, no, you don't need to come to us. You go to your primary insurance.
And you cannot.
So we don't usually pay for that secondary coverage.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I tend to agree with what Larry said. But that gets me back to another conundrum, is like, I can't put myself in the head of 200 or 300 people, and I'm sure none of us could. You had a different reading than I did, and Larry's is somewhere closer to what I recall. But I don't see any harm. I'd be willing to support going out for renewable lease that has like a five- and a 10-year threshold. But what's the downside of going back to the same people we went to in the first place and asking them for permission? If we put out an RFP that goes, that talks for a five-year initial period and another five-year renewal period, we bring to town meeting, if the lay of the land is really different, and now you've got a private entity that's willing to do the lease, and we feel like we finished the construction and we're ready to go, what's the harm really? How many, I mean, you're only taking up a few extra months, and you get to town meeting and they want to do it, then you'll know what their answer is.
I do think to that point, one thing, I know John and I, when we originally, you know, went down and we tried to lease it, we did have three areas, and we only had one taker. And it would be nice to get a sense for the marketplace. Why ask town meeting to do something if there is no marketplace? It sounds like there's a marketplace. It sounds like there's an opportunity. And I'd love the input to see if we have the areas right, you know, to make sure we have it. But maybe we could do something that was contingent upon town meeting, then approving a longer stint.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting we wait on the lease. What I'm saying is, as a matter of fact, that's backwards. That's the thing that I've been railing against for the year and a half that I've been here. We used to go to town meeting with something in our hand that was, you get this, folks, at town meeting in exchange for giving that. The fire department's an excellent example of that, with the new fire station. That's the way business was always done. So rather than saying, let's wait to see what town meeting wants to do, I'm suggesting, go out for bid, have real bids, have a real contract possibility that's subject to the ratification of town meeting. And if you do that, then everybody knows what town meeting's thinking, because they get the last say.
John?
I just don't quite understand Mr. How's position on this, because.
It's democracy.
We did not go, can I, can I, can I talk?
Yes, you may.
I don't think we went to town hall, our town meeting, asking for them to vote on winter boat storage. That, that wasn't what the article was for. We didn't ask, we received feedback. We received comment to the article that had a number of different items with regards to leases. That's what was voted on. Just because we received input from town meeting that, on the winter boat storage issue, that's not what was voted on. So I don't see how we are going against the will of the people, will of town meeting, by doing boat storage. I just don't understand it.
To that point, we were looking, I mean, the way I understood it and the way, you know, I guess there is some debate about the way it was written, but it was about leasing. It wasn't about whether or not we would allow boat storage. It was about the term length of the lease, from three to 10 years. So maybe it was poorly written, but that was the item.
Yeah, I don't dispute.
Michael?
The only thing I would disagree with that is, it was any amount of time up to 10 years. That's the way it was worded. It wasn't three to 10 years. We never talked about three years. We never talked about 10 years.
That's what I'm saying, though. It was written, in other words, to Mr. Hour's point. It was confusing language to them, but it was not about.
But my amendment was to make Sacquet Tucket, to strike Sacquet Tucket Harbor out of that. And that's how that came up.
It was the amendment to strike the lease of Sacquet Tucket out of that. Not, don't do winter boat storage.
Right. That's what I'm saying. I think that was, that's exactly what I'm saying.
Boat storage leasing.
Confusion in terms of what was on town meeting floor, but what the intention was, and we discussed it here as a board. And to that point, we also discussed the fact prior to when we, when we chose to not, which I did not. But when we chose not to allow it anymore, it had gone only down to the one year to that point because of the project. It wasn't that we went from three years to one year intentionally. It was because we had a construction project.
Larry?
Let me move that we prepare and send an RF, request for proposal for winter boat storage at Sacquet Tucket Harbor.
For what term?
Of these, starting this fall.
For how long?
Until, well, when we open up, till next spring.
The lease term would be three years.
Oh, lease term for three years.
Yeah, I would do three years.
Three years.
We won't get a bidder if we go less than three.
Right. They've already said that less than that's not worthwhile, so. Did you have a comment?
No, I was second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Michael?
Could I just get you to repeat the motion?
I move that we prepare and send a request for proposal to lease Sacquet Tucket Harbor for winter boat storage, lease term, lease duration of three years.
Thank you. I guess so. The only other question I would have, is that an open-ended RFP for anyone in the public or anyone to bid on? Are we targeting local businesses?
I would target local businesses. Can we do that in an RFP?
Yeah, I don't think legally we can limit. The reality is.
For businesses?
It would be for businesses.
Okay.
So on that discussion note, I would also ask, are we able to say, and I don't know the answer to this, but are we able to say that within the, whoever's the winning bidder, right? Within that, that they give priority to Harwich residents? Are we able to say that?
Or is that just our judgment? That's a good question, you and Michael.
Well, because I'm thinking we have boat owners here tonight who are Harwich residents, who don't have places to store their boat, so to the point of they would be able to, other boat, you know, owner companies could do that. How do we protect them?
Michael?
I think I'd like to see, I mean, I think we're getting ahead of ourselves here. I'd like to see maybe a proposal come back from John as to what he would define the area, the amount of boats, the size of the boat for requirement, since this is being done to accommodate large vessels. Or are we just renting a piece of our parking spot of X amount of square feet for anything that the winning? Um, or are we just renting a piece of our parking spot of X amount of square feet for anything that the winning bidder can put there? Whatever the parameters, I guess, of the lease, I would like to see something, because I think right now we're voting on nothing.
Well, I think that actually what we're saying is we'd bring the RFP back here so we would be able to comment on it. So rather than just have him come back at another time for another meeting, why not move forward with the idea that we're going to approve that RFP anyway, so John's going to have part of that be in the RFP. Right, John?
We can certainly put that together.
That you would have it defined in the parameters of, of the...
I think if we're talking about, you know, where we don't want to have people take the masks off and go under, then we will select a certain part of the parking lot. I mean, if the board's okay, I mean, we did have three lots before identified, and we could certainly give the board that information for smaller boats, but, you know, that's something if the board wants to just do the large mast boats, we can, and not do those other parcels. Uh, the only caveat I would like to add, that I think from what you're hearing, is being able to go out to bid for like a 10-year lease would make sense, and, and for Don's point,
Right.
that, you know, I would, would recommend, I guess, that administration put together through the Harbor Master a, uh, another request to extend out for winter boat storage for up to 10 years if we get successful bidders in this three-year cycle.
Right, I think that's a good idea.
Uh, two points, if I may, uh, Michael, you raise a good point. I would think at the RFP, when John puts it together, we talk to John and put those details in there when it comes back to us. Because it's, I, I agree, I made it open-ended to do that.
We would want to have that.
We'd have to have that for when we're out. Uh, the second point I'd make is, is that, uh, I don't think, I'm not sure we can do it, but I wouldn't restrict it to Harwich residents because we're trying to benefit the Harwich businesses, not necessarily Harwich residents.
Yeah, no, maybe I misspoke, I didn't mean limited, I just meant prioritize. But I don't know that we can, and I wouldn't want to limit it, to restrict it in the sense that people would lose business, so ultimately, you can strike that.
Yeah, I don't believe by procurement we can...
Yeah, so just strike that.
Restrict it that much.
Michael?
Well, I personally wouldn't want to vote on something that's going to take Mr. Bayless and not have him have a place for his boat a few years from now because other people beat him to the punch. I mean, aren't we doing this for taxpayers, or are we doing this to create a business?
Well, the only reason I'm saying to strike that is if it puts us in a legal position that we cannot do that, I wouldn't want, you know...
I just don't think we can restrict it only, I think we could probably give preference...
Right.
To, but I don't think we can solely restrict it to Harwich only.
That's what I just said, though, I just said not to restrict it, but to give priority to Harwich residents. And I don't know why we couldn't do that, I mean, a local business owner can probably make that decision. So, I mean, ma, rather than put it in the language, right now, we can look at the draft, come back and tweak it and go back and see what we can, what we can actually put out. So at least we have a document that we're working with. So it's been moved and seconded, any, oh, Don, sorry.
I would be very disappointed if we just went for this three years, and so as a consequence, I am going to vote no on this. I would be very enthusiastic about putting it out, uh, in two chunks, uh, with an option to renew, so the town meeting gets to it, because I personally feel like we shouldn't be, to, to John's, uh, point here, uh, earlier, you don't own that property, I don't own that property, the town owns that property, the board doesn't own that property either. If, we're missing an excellent opportunity to do this in partnership with the same town meeting that took a decision last time around. Doing it this way has the look and feel of trying to figure out a way of how to get around dealing with town meeting, and I'm just not for that. If, if this, if this motion were for a five-year lease with a five-year renewal, uh, and it was brought to town meeting already bid on, I'd be all in.
How, so I have a question, how could we bring, we cannot do that, we can't do five years, we're restricted currently to three years.
Yes, you can, by bringing it to town meeting for ratification.
Right, but then we're going to town meeting with a five-year and another five-year, then technically...
Well, five-year with a five-year renewal would be covered under the 10 years that they allow for a town meeting.
There would have to be, there would have to be a clause in there that if town meeting didn't approve it, it would...
Why, why can we not get out of this by, uh, amending the motion from, uh, three years with the possibility of renewing it to, uh, 10 years?
If it were passed at town meeting.
If it were passed at town meeting.
Sub, subject to town meeting.
So we go three, which we can do, and we give, we go back to town meeting to see if we can renew it to 10 years.
That's a good, yeah, that's... Ed?
Yeah, you know, uh, it all, i, if, if you want to, uh, hold to creating a situation where you can lease it up for 10 years, that's fine, but that's not going to, uh, happen until next May, which means...
It is a season, yeah.
This season, there's no, there'll be no storage there, and, um, you know, I think the, uh, town meeting action previously taken was, uh, to say, the, the Board of Selectmen didn't have the authority to lease up to 10 years, it didn't say you can't exercise your right, uh, as provided by Massachusetts general law to do up to a three-year lease, and, um, I personally, in order to make sure that there is interest amongst the local business community, we ought to put out the option that we do have authority to do a, a three-year lease. And, uh, if that draws bidders, then, uh, if it's, uh, if, uh, the bidding public would indicate that they would like a longer, uh, lease term, well, they may be fine with a, a, a three-year lease term renewed every three years. Uh, we, we don't know that, um, but if, if, if they want to push for a longer term, we can do that at a later time.
Evan?
Yeah, I just wanted to, ooh, that's a little close. I just wanted to, uh, confirm with the, uh, the board that, uh, you could bid it out ahead of time and make that contract contingent to town meeting. Um, so, you know, whether we're talking about limping this along i, in, in, in some way until May, or if we're talking about doing a, a three-year lease and then, you know, having the extension be five years or seven years at the end of that one. Um, but you, you could, you know, bid this out and make that a lar, longer extension or a larger amount ahead of time.
Thank you. I think to...
As well as preference, I, I thought preference.
I think to Ed's point, though, to leave it at the clean three-year probably makes the most sense in the sense that that's what we're allowed to do currently, and to Don's point, we bring it, we can bring it to town meeting.
Bring it to the May 18 of town meeting.
So that it's clear that we're not trying to exceed our authority and let town meeting decide if they want to go further. But at least we answer questions for boaters and business owners in, in the sense that it's not one year, it's three years, and it makes it more plausible, so.
But in doing the three, we're winding up telling town meeting that we're going to get out of this what we want to without even talking to you.
Again, I think that there's probably differences of opinion over what was, you know, discussed on town meeting floor. I'm not speaking for anybody, I'm just taking away what we, what we went to with town, to town meeting, what the motion was. So ultimately, three years, we cannot exceed, and we're not going to exceed, and that's what we're hearing from the business owners, and we're certainly hearing from the public that there's a need. So, so we have the motion, go ahead.
Tom Sherry. Uh, you know, listen to people throughout the town. When Mr. Clark decides to spend anything under $50,000 without your okay, the town gets upset. Now, you're saying to say, "We're going to spend," well, we can get away with doing this for three years against what the town riches were. So again, there's going to be a lot of voters who say, "Now, what's the board trying to pull?" Okay, so I'm just pointing out that... Sorry, that, I'm done.
Michael?
My last comment is just a response to yours. You, you say, or we've heard from the public that there's a need, but we also heard from a business owner that he can accommodate boats. So I, I'm arguing that there's no need.
He also said he was interested in bidding on it.
Sure.
So, I mean, if he's interested in bidding on it, I'm sure that there are other business owners interested in bidding on it. And to the point of what we're trying to get away with, we're not trying to get away with anything. It was three years, then it was one year because of construction. The board didn't change the rules, we're playing by the rules, and we're making that perfectly clear tonight by not amending a motion that if town meeting were to approve a 10-year, we'd go to that. Because we're trying to send a clear message that we're doing what we're supposed to do under our authorized ability to do so. So we've gotten various requests, this is what we normally do if we have interest from the public about various issues, we bring them here for a discussion. So we're having that discussion. So positive discussion in the sense of people sharing their ideas, and I think that's exactly what we're supposed to do, so. We have a motion. Yes?
Last one.
Really?
That was certainly your opinion that you just said, because I would agree with Don, that when that article was brought forward last year, it was one year, or it was up to 10 years, that there was no defined three years. So my opinion is similar to Don's, and I respect yours, that's it.
And, thank you, and I respect yours.
Thank you.
And, and, you know, my, my feeling is, in, in the past, we had here, uh, for as long as I've been a, a selectman or lived in town, there, uh, the selectmen went through a process every three years of leasing out, uh, space at one of our marinas, uh, parking lots for boat storage, and we're just continuing on, it's, uh, changed because of, uh, the types of funding we've used at, at different marina, uh, marina, uh, repairs, um, and so we've had to move from Allen Harbor to just making areas at Sacquetucket available. Um, but it's nothing that we haven't done, uh, for many, many, many decades in the past.
Okay, so we have our motion, does anyone want the motion repeated? Okay, uh, yeah, and it's been seconded, so, uh...
But, did he change the motion and have the second agree to it? Because I don't recall that happening.
No, he didn't amend it.
No, I didn't change it, I just repeated it.
What, Madam Chair, can you ask the maker of the motion to repeat it?
Would you repeat the motion?
Sure, let me, let me sure I get the language. I move that we, uh, we prepare and send a request for proposal for winter boat storage at Sacquetucket Harbor, uh, for a three-year period.
Second.
You did, already.
No, it's been, we're just repeating it, moved and seconded, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, sorry, opposed.
Aye.
I didn't mean, if that's my, opposed.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, KP Law, legal representation discussion. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You will note that there is, nothing is backup for this discussion. Uh, that, first of all, I only want to deal with our obligations for our current council. The reason there is no backup for this is I have asked, uh, the Finance Director, I've asked the TA's office, uh, for any memorandum of understanding and/or contract that we might have with KP Law for their representation. I know they sure as heck send invoices, and my question was, on what basis do we pay them? So, I do have feelings about the quality of our representation, about what I would like to do, but that's going to be another agenda item that I'd like to, uh, have the chair put together, uh, which will have backup. But to address the current problem, unless I'm missing something, and through you, Madam Chair, uh, to the town administrator, is there's an MOU, a memorandum of understanding and/or a contract that we're operating off of, or is these just one-off invoices that we just are paying based on their standard rate because that's what we do?
Yeah, no, uh, in, in the procurement law, it has certain positions that are exempted, so they're considered to be essentially almost employment, and the selection of a town attorney is an appointment. So generally, the, the town, uh, the Board of Selectmen makes their appointment for one year, so the position of the town attorney is a, uh, position that is an at-will position. So at any point the board desires to change, the board can solicit, uh, other attorneys to come in. Uh, my recommendation, obviously, is that if you were to do that, there are certain litigations that we're in the middle of that we would want to make sure that we finish those, the tail, if you would, on those, and then have someone start afresh from anything that comes in as of a certain date.
Well, a, and I'm not interested at all in pulling the house down around us, but, uh, so that this would be what are leave, we did anything, but I'm not suggesting we do it tonight, anyway. I just wanted the public to hear that that's the deal.
Yes.
So, in my, in my time here, we have not made the yearly appointment of council. I understand they're at will, uh, that's not my concern in any event. It's going to wind up being things that were said to us that weren't necessarily true, and whether or not we want to look at other council, uh, because this is a fairly expensive deal. It's, I think it was $147,000 last year?
Yeah, a little bit more.
Okay, so, all I wanted to establish for the public right now was we got representation, it normally gets appointed one year, we haven't done that, but it is an exemption under law, so it's not that we're doing anything shady. On the other hand, there is no binding agreement that we have to play out.
And that's designed by the law.
If that's all true, then, that's all I wanted to say, and I would like to have a fuller discussion about our representation and how we achieve it, whether it's in-house, uh, contract, combination of both, or whatever, but now that we know that we're not obligated to go forward, we can have that discussion another time.
So when we do, oh, sorry, did you have something to say?
Why don't you?
Well, in terms of, uh, the further discussion, just so I'm clear, you know, we'll have a, a, um, more defined, uh, role of what that backup information you would like to have, okay? And also, um...
It's not a next week thing because I got to develop it, but, yeah, I wanted to establish that at least I'm looking at it.
At some point, you'll, yeah, okay. Uh, Ed?
Yeah, um, for the life of me, I can't exactly remember what year it was that we last reviewed, providers of, uh, town council services, but it was eight, nine, 10, potentially 10 years ago. Um, at the time, uh, we chose to continue, uh, being served by Copelman Page or KP Law. Um, and at the time, uh, they quoted us a hourly rate.
Mm-hmm.
Um, do we know if that rate has changed since then?
Yeah, and...
And have we approved that rate change?
Yes.
On yearly?
From recollection, I think it went from 170 to 175, and I remember it was a $5 change, and it did come before the board, it was approved before the board.
Yeah, last year.
So...
Probably, yeah, a year or two ago.
It'd be nice if we could, uh, as, as sort of a baseline is, uh, find out when the last time we did, did the actual yearly appointment of the, uh, town council that we're supposed to do every year. Be nice to know.
That does go back, I know before me, I haven't seen that in the last five years anyway.
Michael?
Uh, it's, it's specific to the agenda to be KP Law, but if, if we could, I think we should broaden this to the other councils that we use as well, tax collection as well as labor council. And if we're going to talk about it, why don't we talk about all three?
Sure. Okay.
And, and I'm going to pile on too, Don. Uh, I'd like to be, uh, sure you look at, uh, reporting structures. So that, uh, KP Law, I think, feels now they report to the town administrator, and I think we also have to have an avenue of a lawyer that we can, uh, request information from independently.
Not only not piling on, that's exactly the kind of discussion I was contemplating, but that's not for tonight. But I just wanted to establish that we have...
No, I agree, I'm just putting on your pile as you come, when you come back to it.
Sure.
Okay, that's a reporting structure I added.
I mean, but I understood that, that's exactly, you know, who is the town? Who does the town council report to, that, that kind of thing is, was also going to be part of the discussion.
And we should probably, I mean, I'm, I'm throwing this out there, but whatever, when we agenda this next, we should probably also have, or at least at some point have, uh, John Giorgio come in and sort of have a convers, I don't know.
I would think he would be coming in when we get to the point where we're contemplating who it is that we'd be looking at, and he would be one of those who we'd be looking at.
Okay.
But it'd be premature before that.
Okay, any further discussion on that? Okay. Uh, old business, we have nothing under old business, contracts, town administrators' report.
I do have a, a few items, some of these items, though, I think we're going to have, uh, at later meetings. So the CDM Smith progress report on the sewer collection system, uh, phase two. Uh, I think we have planned to have a more in-depth discussion in regards to sewer issues on either the 17th or the 24th. Uh, one thing I did want to at least bring up, uh, in terms of that, uh, I think it was two Thursdays ago, uh, I went out to a neighborhood to do a, a presentation, I brought somebody from CDM, and Evan was with me, uh, just to kind of answer questions, and I think there are still a fair amount of, you know, questions out there about what to do and how to do it. And I know the wastewater support committee is doing a how-to manual... And I know the wastewater support committee is doing a how-to manual to help people walk through that process. So to that end, I did have a request even for tonight to come out and speak to a neighborhood. I don't mind going out and speaking to neighborhoods, but I think if we could get a larger forum and maybe have more discussion, a larger discussion. So I did tentatively schedule, we have booked the community center on October third at six o'clock. I wasn't necessarily wanting, if the Board wants to be there officially, obviously you're more than welcome. If there was a few people that just wanted to answer questions, I was hoping more detailed questions for CDM to be able to answer and walk through. But, you know, I'll leave that to the Board, how you would like to, to do that, if you want to have it as a formal Board meeting. But we did tentatively schedule a, a time to have people come in, so we can kind of advertise it and let people know if you have questions in regards to the sewer project in general, or more specifically to Phase Two and the tie-in. It may be a good opportunity for the wastewater support committee to pass out their materials about the how-to on the.
If I may, that's my comment. I, I would appreciate it, Chris, if you would work that through the wastewater support committee, so they feel they're part of the, the program rather than, you know, nullify them after the fact.
Okay, well, certainly it's a tentative date. I just wanted to, we're getting a fair amount of requests.
Yeah, I'm just concerned about the overall communication. You know, we have this committee. I'd like to be sure we use them to the fullest.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a good point. I mean, they should be incorporated into that, whatever night it is, if they can't do the third, then, right. Ed?
Yeah, um, as I understand it, you are working on agendizing a discussion?
Ooh, new word.
For a, a meeting coming up? Which meeting?
Yeah, I was hoping that we could get that on for nine seventeen, unless the Board thinks that's too soon.
Next week. And what would be the sort of general topic?
What, so, he's right. So I was looking for Board members to share, you know, items that they want addressed or concerned with, or, or areas that we need better refinement of how we're communicating. The overall access even to certain documents, border health, et cetera, topography, and the various terms. So there's multiple pieces.
Okay.
So I, and, and the guide, as well as the guide, and how to best get the most effective and helpful information into that guide.
So the, the four that I had, just to, to kind of perform in function, hopefully, would be the wastewater support committee, their information guide, just to have that as one of the topics. The DHY agreement, to kind of go through the DHY agreement. We do have land use controls, has been on several Board agendas, but we'd need to kind of make some progress, I think, in terms of that as we approach October fifteenth and the submission for the financing, some of these things people will be looking for. I did have a meeting this morning on Cole Brook to come in and do an overview. It's been a long time since we've had a chance to do the overview on Cole Brook. So that's another one that we are looking to do. I just had another one that flew out of my head. But those four are the, the four that at least I, I know are decision points that are, are coming up.
Right, okay. Ed?
I, I ask that question because, you know, there, as we all know, out in the public, especially the public that are in the area that will be in the first phase, there are, there's still a lot of miss, lack of understanding exactly how the process is actually going to work, what the timeframes are. And I'm, and, but I am aware of, and I've had a number of people from the area contact me, and they're feeling, in, in their belief that there's still a lot more information they want to gather from us on how the process is and what, what is going to be required of them. There's a, a vendor who is hold, has been holding meetings, which have been, I guess, somewhat useful, but also they, they feel that they're getting, in essence, pushed to sign on the dotted line by the end of this week in advance of us holding any of these informational meetings, indicating that there, that they'll be at a disadvantage if they don't sign on early. And a number of people are feeling quite strong-armed, and I think it would be nice if that vendor would hold off on those deadlines that they've decided to set, because I know it's not sitting well for a lot of folks.
Uh, Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To Ed's last point, private businesses do what private businesses do. I mean, what I would like to repeat again for about the fourth or fifth time is, we have no approved contractor for engineering and/or installation at this point. I'm not sure that we will ever have an approved contractor, as much as a list from which you can select from. But for anybody out there who's watching this, there is nobody who's the official approved engineer. So if you want to sign with somebody without knowing what your other options are, then that's, just understand that's the deal. There's two other things, though. One's a housekeeping thing. Please post the October third for the selectmen, because if more than two of us show up, it's going to be real awkward. If it's real simple to just put out a posting, we don't have to have a meeting, but just post that we're going to be there.
Just in case.
For the purposes of discussing. And finally, I, I do want to make a statement, because there's been some interest in getting individual briefings from CDM Smith about the three-town system. And I think David Young needs to be on the agenda. That is absolutely a public discussion. There is no possibility that us meeting sequentially, one by one, is sanctioned under the open meeting law, because it's going to be the same discussion. And it's a discussion that has no possibility of being an executive session. It's a, it's a public conversation. I suspect we all have questions, which brings me to the last one that I was thinking goes.
Can I just interrupt you for one minute? So, I agree, and I intended to.
He should come in and just.
For David to be here, but also.
That should be a major part of a meeting.
For twofold, like the special legislation as well as Phase Two. Yeah, so that was my intention.
And then finally, there are people, I said this in passing at the Selectmen's Report last time, but I want to reiterate it. We should never be in a position where the committee that we have tasked with providing the townspeople with information answers an inquiry from the public that, I don't know about that, you're going to have to go to CDM Smith to find out about that, because the answer that the public gave was, but isn't that your responsibility? Isn't that the government that's supposed to find out these things? Which gets us back to what we want to do with a project manager, because there's a circuitous nature in all of this. You go, to Chris, you may not have time to get to your place. You go to a meeting where our own committee says they don't know the answer, and then CDM Smith may know the answer, but we're telling them to go back directly, which is where we started.
Right.
And we don't want to be there. So maybe we can.
Yeah, that's.
Clarify that in that discussion too, about, you know, are we going to do a project manager? So that we can get consistent in accurate information in the hands of the people who are going to be affected by it.
And I do anticipate all of that being a fairly lengthy discussion, so that I've got a few other smaller issues to put on for that. So if you have something, you know, that's not going to.
That would be great.
Let me know. Michael?
So just to touch on what Ed and Don said, and Don, Ed had mentioned that people felt like they were being strong-armed. I think it's probably important to note, or to announce, if we could, that the town has not hired anyone, and these are solicitations from private businesses. And I believe the bulk letter that went out was Coastal.
Yes, sure.
So Coastal Engineering's attempt at getting all of this work is simply that, their attempt, and not something that's sanctioned by the Board, the Town, or anyone else. And that people need to know that we're not pressing them, that, that Coastal is doing what Coastal does and they're soliciting business. It has nothing to do with Town Harbor.
Yeah.
Ed?
And also that there is no predetermined set deadline yet on any of this.
No, and, but I think we need to be very careful when we say that, because there is no deadline, there is no approved contractor. To Don's point, we would provide a list. And the only thing that we want to be clear on is that Coastal is outdoing what private businesses do and soliciting that. There are other groups in town, or not just in town, but other places that could be doing the same thing. So being proactive is one thing. Ultimately, also, though, we need to be careful about, and we can have this discussion when we have our discussion next week, but, but we also need to be careful about our timeframe, and this is, I think, another matter of discussion. Because there is a benefit to having a design ahead of the connection, so that you can say where you want your connection to be, so that the system comes up your street to help you facilitate that. It's not mandatory in the sense, but you, it could be to your benefit, is my only point. I mean, I plan on doing it sooner.
But certainly, certainly, Madam Chair, that the deadline is not this Friday.
No, no, no. No, there is no deadline, no, to be clear.
And that's what's being put out to a lot of people.
Well, it could be. I've, you know, they, Coastal presented at our annual picnic this spring, and, and I can state for a fact, one is, is that, they said, I said, our neighborhood leadership, if you will, said that this is, no one was endorsing anyone. It was very clear for, for that. Their marketing, that's clear. They made no pressure at all to, to get things done. Though what they were pressuring was, their discussion was that, by their own literature, we're supposed to have a, a plan by next May. And the pressure of their, and then, so that, I, I say that because there is confusion between when we need a plan done and when construction will start. Because we dug ourselves a, a little bit of a hole, and I say that pun intended, by stating, don't worry, nothing's happening for two or three years, and at the same time, people know they need to plan something in shorter time. And we have to bring that discussion, discussion forward. I know every neighborhood is different. Mine has been very proactive, and if there's anyone pressuring anyone, was our neighbors wanting to get things started, because there are, some of them are going to Florida in the winter. They were, they were anxious to get more comfortable that they weren't going to lose out, you know, come back next spring and find out the things that move without them. So I get the feedback you said, and we need to be careful that we're, people are sure we're not endorsing them, and they need to back off of people feeling pressure. I'm just saying, in my instance, that's not true.
I, I would say the same. I mean, I had the same type of presentation from Coastal in my neighborhood. It was very clear that same thing. I wasn't endorsing them, they weren't town-endorsed, and they made it clear that they weren't either. And, and we in our neighborhood have received information, but we've received nothing with any kind of a deadline, you know, or anything like that. So, to be clear, they're not a town contractor, there'll be a list provided, but I haven't experienced that type of pressure either. So, no pun intended on that.
I just had a few more items, but the discussions, all set. In terms of, I announced this last week, so I, I, I was kind of quickly, we did receive the dredging grant for thirty-six thousand. So that was one. I appreciate the quick turnaround. The State asked us to submit within two weeks, and they had a decision within three weeks. So it was a pretty good turnaround from the State's perspective and from our perspective. Also, we have had a meeting subsequent to the last Selectmen's meeting with the meeting before, and we're starting to look at the SMART program for solar. So I think we will look at the area close to the landfill that we had as designated at Town Meeting for a as-of-right use, that is town-owned property that we could continue to build on, if you would, the, the solar field. We are looking at other buildings in other locations in the town to see if we can make it more palatable for a business to come in and do several of those. Also, I am planning on, I don't know if anyone else is planning on, but EPA is doing an award for Pleasant Bay. So I will be driving into Boston. I just want to make sure that there was a Harwich representative to accept the award on Wednesday morning at eleven. So if anyone has the time and wants to drive in with me to Faneuil Hall, you're more than welcome to tag along. And then just lastly, on CPC, Community Preservation, I, I'd great, love to have some Board input. On September thirteenth, which is this Thursday, they're doing a overview of the status of where our projects are. So I am planning on attending that to give kind of an update on the various projects. But then on September twentieth, which I will not be able to be at, I have a, another obligation, a work obligation. But they're going to go through the project form for the upcoming year. Not too much turnaround time, quite honestly. That's the September twentieth, and then the applications are due in October first. So it's about ten days. But if there are Board items that you'd like to have administration consider, I know the Housing Trust, the Affordable Housing Trust, once we get the full complement, I think that, you know, requesting additional money to keep that going, I think there's going to be enough projects and not enough money. So, you know, that's one that I, I think we will do. But I don't know of other CPC-related projects that the Board may have an interest in having administration pursue. Obviously, the next week or so, I'll try to see if there's additional ones, and we'll bring up at a Department Head meeting to see what requests we can put together. But I at least wanted to let the Board know that we are coming up on not only capital budget season, but also CPC session time. And that actually concludes my comments from this evening.
Thank you, Chris. Don, Selectmen's Report?
Yeah, well, no, before that.
Sorry.
Comment on his report. Through you, Madam Chair, does anybody know whether they've put a legal advertisement in for that meeting? For the twentieth? The reason I say that is, there were two components that's under state legislation for CPC. One was, there's supposed to be a public hearing of the community needs. So that requires two different things. It requires, you know, to put an advertisement in the newspaper as a public hearing. The second is, it's not, I've read and reread this section, the CPC and its MGL. It doesn't call for, for them to go over, this is what this form is, this is what this form is, and this is what this form is, and this is how you submit to us, as much as it's supposed to also elicit from the public what they'd like to see happen over the next year, because it's public money. So that was the one opportunity that was supposed to assess the public need, as it were. I'm not sure whether it's been advertised, and I'm not sure whether it's been advertised to actually do that. So I'd kind of like us to check into that.
Chris, will you follow up on, on that?
And that's a good point. That, I know when I was on the committee, we did that meeting each fall to.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Have a general discussion. It wasn't specific for any request, but it was, you know, people came in and said, you know, I might be interested in doing this.
That was when Jack was on? Yeah, I remember that.
Okay.
In my memory, it hasn't actually been done for a number of years. There's also in the legislation some discussion about developing a community preservation plan for the community, which I know we've never done.
All right.
September twentieth and an Oc- October first deadline? Is that real? They're trying not to spend money? I can only report what I've.
Is that shorter than normal, though?
I think that's kind of consistent with what they've done in the past. They haven't given us a lot of time.
Yeah, I'm going to have to stick up for Dave Nixon here. The, in our attempt to do what we needed to do for the ex officio members, we did not appoint anybody until we got news from the committees that were sponsoring them, that they were putting them forward. Dave talked to me about his vice chair being one of those people being held hostage. We voted on her last meeting. So, I, I totally agree with what Mike is, Michael's saying. But I will say that, to a certain degree, it's likely that David's going to say, well, yeah, but I haven't had a full complement of people, so what do you want me to do?
Extend the deadline?
Fine, but I'm just saying that that's why it's this late. So extending the deadline does make sense, given the fact that they've been doing this in August before.
I would further think that they need to publicize this right now, like tomorrow, that this is coming up, so people think about it.
And I have often characterized it as they're playing with house money, because it really. A- and I have often characterized it as they're playing with house money, because it really is money from houses. I mean, it's from taxes. So it's not their money, it's the townspeople's money, and they should have an opportunity to weigh in on that one public hearing that they're guaranteed every year.
Okay. Any other comments on that subject? Okay. Ed, did you have anything to select? Michael?
So the only thing I'd like to mention is the housing trust. We are at a standstill because we have no applicants. So if anyone's listening, we need people to apply for the housing trust. So far, we've, I think, interviewed three. So we need some people, so Chris can get.
How many?
Going.
We need five, and there's three that have been appointed.
Which, and the three are?
Public.
Are the statutory?
Yeah, myself is the administrator, a member of the board, which is Don, and then Larry Brophy. Larry Brophy, who's at-large.
At-large, okay.
We did receive in the, in the mail fairly recently, another applicant, just.
But we need a few more, and we'd like to interview multiple people, not just pick bodies thrown at us. That's it for me.
Okay. Larry?
Nothing, I'll, I'll beat the bullshit for housing trust.
Can we loop around to me, because I didn't get a report?
Oh, sorry, John, I apologize.
That's okay.
I apologize.
So says the other Don. That's actually a little bit more, I was, I was anticipating saying something about that for appointments, but we also need somebody for the Board of Health. There's a number of positions that are critical. Same deal, though. On the Board of Health, it's a regulatory body, it actually controls what you can and can't do in your house in one of its major areas. It's not just a place that we're gonna throw a body to. It has to be somebody that is both interested and dedicated to wanting to do some public service, but also has some expertise that they're willing to offer. So, a- along with the housing trust, Board of Health is also out there. There's some alternates to the planning board that are out there. If you could please look at the site, because we, we, it really is important to have public, uh, response to this. Anybody who's out there saying, you know, it's the same twenty people who always represent us, well, here's your opportunity. We're asking you to come on in, it doesn't, you don't need any prior training. If you're reasonably intelligent and you're appointed, you'll be given all of the tools you need to learn the particular area you wanna be appointed to. We'll give you all the support you need, but we need you to apply. Without you applying, we can't appoint you.
Thank you. Larry?
It's short. To that end, Chris, could you just double-check the website to be sure that those are up to date?
The list of.
The list of committees and vacancies, because it's easy to fall behind.
And liaisons.
And liaisons are, yeah, those need to be updated, they're, they're not right.
Janelle agrees.
Other liaisons.
Yeah.
Some of them are. That's one of those auto-fill things, because we have a committee page, it's all you can do adjourn.
Wait, no, I have to follow up on this stuff.
I'm moving adjourn.
No. Hold on.
Hold on.
So, prior to adjourning, I just wanna remind, uh, board members that, about the fraud policy survey mailbox.
I'm two Thursdays.
Also, the nine-eleven ceremonies that Chief Clark mentioned earlier tonight.
Tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning, and arrive at nine forty-five. Also, the Cranberry Festival this weekend, starting on Friday evening, carrying through till Sunday, correct?
Yep.
And also the fireworks, nine fifteen at eight P.M. And congratulations to the parade winners.
Wasn't us, though.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
So.
So you got away with it.
And I led the parade.